There we go. Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, February 11, 2015, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to start by welcoming Rob Parish, who is the newest member of the commission. Some of you may recognize that name from Moscow Pullman Regional Airport, where Rob has been the manager for a number of years and recent, not too recently, three years ago now, retired. And he found retirement, he wanted something more to do, it looked like. Anyway, next up, approval of the minutes from January 14. You'll recall that there was no meeting, second meeting in January, because we lacked a quorum.
I'll move to approve.
Deb has moved to approve.
Second.
And thank you, Nels, for a second. I didn't see anything. Has anyone else seen any corrections or notes for the minutes? All right, hearing that, hearing none, call for a vote on approving the minutes of the 14th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain.
Okay, Rob abstains, Wendy abstains.
And Rebecca.
And Rebecca. Okay, you okay with that, Ann? Got those, great, thank you. Correspondence, Mike, anything from staff?
None from staff.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. The first is, shared readings are up, and those are linked off of the P&amp;Z Commission homepage. Down in the bottom right, you'll find a link to our shared readings page. There are two items up there that Mike and I thought would be interesting relative to some of the conversations we have coming up on legacy crossing, off-street parking. So in two weeks, that would be the February 25 meeting, I guess, we will have a chance to discuss those. And just so that Rob understands, we're trying to do some professional learning. First Bill, and now Mike, serves as our editor. People suggest articles, staff looks for some articles, and then we try to pull together, and I've asked, maybe we could try to have only two. Sometimes we've had more than two, or something longer. Just, and it's optional, there's no grading on this, but it's a chance to read some people thinking about some of the topics that we're then trying to generally work on. In addition, on the shared readings page, if you scroll down to April 2014, you will find a couple of other articles that may also kind of relate to our legacy crossing and parking conversations. So that's that, shared readings. Tomorrow, Thursday, is the nonprofit social. You may remember that in some past years, there's been a commissions fair, and then the commissions fair grew into having some volunteer things. They've reorganized it and renamed it, and I will be there as a representative of planning and zoning. I encourage you to come and look for things in the community that you'd like to volunteer to get involved with. And that's an invitation to the community as well, though I'm not sure this will go out in time, if it's not being broadcast. But my challenge, here's my challenge, Rob, I knew what I was gonna say. I was gonna look for a volunteer to fill the seat that you now occupy. So I'm not sure what I will say at the, in my three minutes of pitch. But anyway, so come on out to the nonprofit social, and it is five to seven, if I recall.
Correct.
Thank you. Other item, Mike has been helping me get ready, a report to council. You may know that all the commissions, in a rotation, take turns reporting once a year to council, and our number has come up. Mike has put together a PowerPoint that kind of highlights the projects that we've worked on over the last 12 months, and so I will be doing that at council Tuesday, because the federal holiday moves the council meeting from its regular Monday time. And then I want to say one other thing, sort of Chair's thought, relative to public participation when we're not doing a hearing. Couple of times recently, during our conversations about ADUs, there've been members of the public who wish to come up. And my thought is to try to, I welcome it, I like it, I want to be able to involve the public, but to try to scope it down and contain it a little bit more. And one of those thoughts is that if somebody comes to one meeting and wishes to speak swell, if they come to another one that I don't want, because then it becomes, we're starting to get into like, public testimony, and one person is here with their viewpoint, and we haven't really noticed it as a broad invitation. So I'm just trying to think, and I'm open to your coaching, trying to think how to strike that balance between welcoming and meeting our other needs. Any other correspondence? Next up, Transportation Commission meeting. Joel is not here. Do you have anything, Mike, for us on that?
I do not, no.
Okay. Next item is open microphone, and this is our standing invitation to the community. Members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on our agenda or currently pending before Planning and Zoning Commission. And we appreciate it when people come down, and every once in a while, we do get something interesting from members of the public at this time. Next up is a public hearing on light manufacturing amendment. I will review how this works for everyone's benefit. First, I'll ask staff to present the information, and then we'll open the public hearing and take comments of three types, in favor, opposed, and of a general nature. Then I'll close the hearing, and I'll invite the commissioners to discuss, and we'll make a decision. So with that, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Before each night, we have a minor amendment to our light manufacturing allowances within the zoning code, and so attached to your packet tonight, we've got the proposed ordinance. And really, the crux of that is, if you flip to the last page, three of four, under the definition sections, first, we're proposing to amend our current definition of light manufacturing, which currently is the manufacturing, compounding, treatment, processing, assembling, packaging, or testing of goods and equipment. And what we're proposing to do is add an extension onto that, which basically states that is primary indoors and which does not present any adverse effect upon surrounding property from smoke, noise, vibration, dust, glare, air pollution, and water pollution. So what that does is really adds nuisance language to the end of that. And we also are shifting, proposing to shift within motor business zone, currently, light manufacturing's listed as a special use. You can see we're proposing to strike that there and move that to an allowed use, basically under the permitted principal uses and structures section. We also have general business zoning districts, which currently does not list light manufacturing, whether as a permitted use or a conditional use. So what we're proposing there is to just include light manufacturing as a conditional use. And last time, the commission reviewed this at the beginning of January, there was, they wanted staff to take a look at possibly adding traffic and circulation considerations at the end of light manufacturing within general business, basically just because it was similar to some other language of other conditional uses earlier on within that chapter. And so that's what I've done in the blue, included light manufacturing, then with specific consideration given to traffic and circulation. And so with that, those three changes are being proposed, and I'd, recommendation before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing and then recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to city council, and I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mike? I think it's pretty straightforward, Mike, thank you. So I will open the public hearing and call for testimony. The record could show that there is no one in the audience. And with that, I will close the public hearing.
Nels?
Your honor. I would note, sorry, we did receive a letter from Victoria Seaver, and I did have copies of that.
Thank you, all right. Not closing the public hearing, and we'll, and Mike, should I read that into the record, or is it enough just to include the reference to the document?
It would probably be good to read it into the record, since it's not in the packet.
Right, 'cause then it will be in the recording.
Yeah.
Okay. It looks like this note from Victoria Seaver begins with a little block, which is a quotation of, looks like, of the proposed language. It says, "Section 11-9, definition 66, manufacturing light, the manufacturing, compounding, treatment, processing, assembling, packaging, or testing of goods or equipment that is primarily indoors and which does not present any adverse effect upon the surrounding property from smoke, noise, vibration, dust, glare, air pollution, and water pollution." That's the change that Mike was discussing with us a moment ago. So Victoria writes, "For the record, I watched P&amp;Z's discussion on light manufacturing, and everything else, as a taped meeting. I noted a citizen comment before regarding adverse effects from traffic. While light manufacturing, as you said, is most likely in motor business and perhaps fronting a highway or major road, please remember that motor business does immediately abut other zones such as R4. Large trucks or semis do travel through neighborhood side roads as well. Please think about traffic from these rigs in residential areas. I would recommend simply adding the word 'traffic,' or another word like delivery vehicles, if better, to the list of adverse effects." Okay, so she's referencing the quote up above. "I can tell you firsthand that in my 26 years as a homeowner on Lily Street, there are food service and compressed gas semis traversing on Lily between Third and A Street every weekday, coming and going. Lily is narrow, and as a renter for years before that on Asbury and Almond Streets, there were big rigs on those streets. As mentioned by a commission member, the Dumas Granary Trucks semis used to block A Street during some of their deliveries. The rig that transports many cars on a rack-like tiers that deliver to Ambassador Auto used to park on Third Street sometimes, impeding traffic on the highway. I would just add that traffic is a consideration, so if needed, it should be included. Situations may be okay, but if a problem, we want to be alert to address them, alert to the need to address them. I'm unable to attend in person while attending the citizens' police academy, which meets at the same time, but I am following you on TV and will attend again once the class is over. Thank you, keep up the good work. Respectfully, Victoria Seaver." All right, with that testimony read into the record, I will close the public testimony and invite the commissioners to discuss the proposed change to the ordinance.
I move that we accept the recommendation that was brought by staff and send it to city council for approval.
Thank you, Nels. Is there a second? Rebecca? Okay, thank you. Victoria raises an interesting problem, that is truck traffic, which might originate from one activity. I think she's identifying several things that are not light manufacturing, but are, like the Norco gas, that are retail activities that deal in large objects, or Ambassador Auto dealing in cars. And I'm sure that trucks find that they need to go on certain routes, and it happens that Lily Street and Almond Street must somehow usefully connect St. John's Hardware and Norco, or some other set of destinations that they're going to. So I don't, I'm sympathetic to the problem, but I don't know what the fix is.
Yeah, 'cause all of the, all of the examples listed are under current conditions. I mean, it has nothing to do with light manufacturing, so it seems like either if we're gonna make traffic an issue, we should revisit it for everything, or not make it an issue. Strikes me as what the choices are.
I think we're, we need to be sensitive to those issues, but after all, if we want business in our town, there is something that goes along with business often, and I think those are just things that we, we cry for more business, and then we cry about getting a little more traffic. It's a hard, you know, and that's something we want to balance, but I don't think this particular, I don't see a kind of heavy industrial use coming from this choice. In other words, we've watched our industry change over years, and I'm suspecting that it isn't gonna have, you can always be surprised, but I don't think that there's a big issue that's come from this. Most of the things that we'd like to encourage in light industry are those interior things, and by, by having the nuisance clause, I don't think, I think we sort of cover our tracks. Well, I'd feel pretty comfortable with it.
Well, traffic is pretty hard to qualify and quantify, really. And so, you know, we could be talking about a UPS truck, well, they go through residential neighborhoods, picking up, delivering, or a FedEx truck, or something that if, I would more normally, personally, associate with light manufacturing, that they produce some, something that has to be shipped out, but it's quickly, yeah, I mean, that's how I'm seeing this, and I could be wrong, but I don't see how it would present unusual traffic circumstances.
So, and I guess the other is, if we value a network of streets, then we can't predict who will think it's convenient to use the network to get to where. So again, as you say, the delivery vehicle doing UPS or something is gonna run down whatever streets work for it, and, and I think I value that network, as opposed to a city of cul-de-sacs.
I mean, could it be part of the process of applying for the permit in those zones, that some assessment of the traffic impact could be part of that? I mean, if it's, if they're expecting a lot of big volume production?
Well, but we're suggesting it's by right in motor business, and what Victoria is commenting is that there are places where motor business lines the highway, and R4 backs it up.
Right, right.
And the traffic is cutting through the neighborhood.
Through R4, yeah. Well, I mean, it probably cuts through R1, too, I mean, sometimes. So I don't know.
So, quick question for Mike. So if it turns into some kind of a traffic cluster, is there any mitigation or process for, you know, people who have the semi blocking their driveway for every other day?
Well, if it was blocking their driveway, and they were loading, unloading, under the police regulations, they're allowed a certain amount of time for that. Unless they were breaking, you know, some type of law or some type of city code, then they'd be permitted to do that. I mean, it's hard to control activity, truck activity around, around the city. Majority of the motor business zone properties adjacent to state highways, and so, you know, those are the arterials and highways that are meant to carry that volume of traffic and that, and those types of vehicles on the roadway, so.
All right, so I think that we're sensitive to the kinds of issues that Victoria raises without seeing any clear way to mitigate them. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'm wondering if the, the clarifications that are under section two, should say or instead of and? I don't know if it matters that much, or lists all the adverse, potential adverse effects.
That is primarily indoors and which does not present any adverse effects from smoke.
So when you get busy.
Oh, I see. Or water pollution.
Yeah. Otherwise, in my, in simple brain, that means it's all of them at once.
That makes sense.
And what makes sense, the word?
To add the word, or substitute, or or for and.
Okay, so was that a motion, Rebecca, to substitute the word or for and preceding water pollution?
Yes, I move that or be inserted and and be stopped.
Deb, would you like to second that?
Clarity.
I will second that.
Okay, we have an amendment to change the wording there in the definition, so that it reads at the end, air pollution or water pollution. Any other discussion of that?
I'd ask Mike if he sees any reason not to.
Make the change, Mike.
No, it sounds good to me.
Objection?
Sure.
With that, all in favor of making the change of the wording in the definition, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention. Not a unanimous one there, Ann. All right, thank you for that catch, Deb. We'll move back to the motion that is on the floor to recommend to city council the adoption of these minor revisions to light industrial. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Again, I think it was unanimous, Ann. Thank you all. The next item in front of us is the second review of the draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance. We've looked at this multiple times in multiple ways, and my goal for tonight is that we leave with something that can be public notice and that we can have a hearing on, but given the timing of things, it would be a month from now, correct?
Correct, yeah, May 11th, or March 11th, excuse me.
All right, so Mike, give us at least a quick walkthrough of this.
Sure. So after we got done reviewing our October survey, commission had given staff direction to basically prepare an ordinance to allow ADUs as a permitted accessory use within R1, R2, R3, R4 zones, and include the following standards, to limit the size to 600 square feet, or 40% of the square footage of the principal dwelling, whichever is less, to limit the occupancy to two occupants, require owner occupancy for either the principal structure or the accessory dwelling unit, and to require one off-street parking space for the ADU on top of the, basically, two required for the principal structure. So looking at the, the draft ordinance that was prepared, we go through the whereas statements, and these are really the statements that describe why we're proposing ADUs and why we're preparing an ordinance for them. And so looking at some of those recitations, we turn to the comprehensive plan under the housing chapter, tells us to provide a mix of housing for diverse population. We describe how accessory structure, dwelling units further that requirement of the comprehensive plan, also to develop ADUs while preserving character of neighborhoods. So that one specifically within the housing section of the comprehensive plan to accomplish. Also looking at the land use and community character section, states to have land uses meet community needs while preserving agricultural land. We describe how accessory dwelling units accomplish that within those recitations, as well as community mobility within the comp plan. We want transportation systems to be safe and multimodal. And then we turn to the Census Bureau, which had put out projections that by 2029, more than 20% of the US population will be over 65, and what that means for the city of Moscow and the nation, and how accessory dwelling units are serving a need there. We also had some discussion, I think it was Nels that brought it up, about more of a strong towns argument, and so I've also included another whereas statement in there that states that accessory dwelling units incrementally increase density and tax base without requiring the extension of additional infrastructure the city will need to maintain. And so we can certainly wordsmith that a little bit, but that was what I had gotten out of Nels's comment at the last meeting that we discussed this.
I don't want to argue with it, Michael, it's okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on the whereas statements, or?
Just a clarification. So the comprehensive plan is addressed, is directing us to develop ADUs. It's not that it fits within the comprehensive plan, but it's actually.
Yeah, it's, we have, yeah, specific implementation item of housing, which, which states that, yep, yep. So we move into the zoning districts portion of the ordinance, and staff had expanded the zoning districts where it's being proposed, Ag Forest, Farm Ranch, suburban residential, on top of the four that we previously discussed, R1, R2, R3, and R4. And that was mainly because of the reason, Ag Forest, you have 40 acre minimums, and really, there's no impact of an accessory dwelling unit when you're talking about that large of properties. Same with Farm Ranch, which has large minimum property sizes. We had some discussion about suburban residential was, which is an acre minimum for the property dimensions on that, and so the commission had discussed possibly requiring a conditional use permit for suburban residential, R1 and R2, and that's where we left off at the last meeting. It was kind of back and forth, and suburban residential, the commission thought that conditional use permit was maybe required under that circumstance as well. So we added, under permitted accessory uses and structures, the language that states accessory dwelling unit subject to the specific use standards of this code. And once again, we had the discussion for a CUP in that. R1, R2, and R3, we're proposing to eliminate accessory living quarters serving as a guest house or domestic servant quarters. So this is basically just striking the current definition in the, in the definition section of the code for a guest house. R1 and R2 and R3 are the only zones where that use comes up, and it's a conditionally permitted use, so you'd have to get a conditional use permit for that. But basically, what a guest house is, is a accessory living quarters that doesn't contain a kitchen in it, meant for short-term stays or durations. Also, under Chapter 6 supplementary regulations, under accessory building setbacks, currently buildings greater than 200 square feet in size, we were proposing to change the max top plate height from 10 feet to 14 feet, and this was really to accommodate that second story above garages. Currently, it's limited to 10 feet, and there'd be issues with adding livable space and still utilizing the five-foot rear yard setback that a lot of the current garages and older neighborhoods currently are set back at, and that's basically our current regulations right now. And so that's just adding a little bit extra room, as well as adding a section, currently our code is silent on dormers. And so we're including a portion in there that discusses that dormers are allowed to exceed 14 feet, as long as they don't exceed 50% of the length of the wall. And so within the roof line, you're able to include dormers, you just can't have a dormer extend all the way for the entire roof line. Then within the definition section, we'd create a definition of accessory dwelling unit, which would be a secondary dwelling unit. which would be a secondary dwelling unit that is accessory to a single-family dwelling on a single lot containing complete housekeeping facilities and which is added to, created within, or detached from the principal dwelling unit and subject to the specific use standards of this code. And we did model this off of HUD's definition of accessory dwelling unit, so it is consistent with that. Also removing, like I mentioned before, guest house, detached structure being accessory to a single-family dwelling, not more than two bedrooms, having no kitchen facilities, and with shovel use or designed for use primarily by guests and/or servants for sleeping quarters only. We really don't have many of these out there. There's been no conditional use permits to set one up or have that use. And so we really don't see any reason why you continue to have a guest house when you could do an ADU instead and have no, you could have a kitchen included within that and have a little bit more flexibility with an accessory structure. We also have tourist home that shows up in our definition sections, which is a private residence having not more than three rooms for hire to transients for only sleeping accommodations and whose trade is seasonal in character. So this just shows up in our definitions, but it's not actually included within any of the zoning districts. So we have an issue. We have an exclusionary zoning code, which means that if it's not, if it's defined and it's not specifically listed in a zoning district, that means it's just not allowed. So we have a not-allowed use that shows up in a definition section, so we're just proposing to eliminate that.
Mike, how would that differ from a bed and breakfast? Because that is an allowed, you know, conditional use in
Yeah, a bed and breakfast is allowed in the majority of the residential zones. R4 would be allowed by right, but the rest of the zones, you'd have to get a conditional use permit. And so some zones, it limits it to two rooms for rent. Other zones, it doesn't, you know, with the condition that off-street parking be provided as well. But, can I answer your question, or is?
Well, I'm just not sure what the difference is between a tourist home and a
Oh, a tourist home.
Yeah.
But a bed and breakfast is a defined use?
Correct.
So that, if it's happening, could continue. It's just
Right.
This is a, it's an appendix, it's just dangling out there in the code.
Yeah, I don't know what that would describe. It talks about transients for sleeping accommodations and whose trade is seasonal in character. Seasonal workers, agricultural operation, or
It's not really a tourist. Yeah.
So my understanding that R1 has allowed guest houses, and you're talking about striking that if ADUs are allowed?
Well, R1, R2, and R3 all allow guest houses through a conditional use permit.
Oh, I see.
So, yeah.
Okay.
But we don't have any of those on record, so nobody's utilized them. There may be a couple of them out there, and it'd just be, you know, we'd be striking this language. They could either convert them to an accessory dwelling unit if they wanted to, or if they didn't want to add a kitchen or some portion of a kitchen, they could just keep on using it as they have been, and basically be a non-conforming use. So they'd be able to continue usage of that. And then that brings us to Chapter 12, which is our specific use standards portion of the zoning code. We have a little bit about applicability and purpose of ADUs, and I'll go right into specific standards that they must meet all zoning, all district zoning regulations and minimum lot size for single-family dwellings. Go on to state that it's limited to 600 square feet in size, or 40% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less; has to be limited to two occupants; requires owner occupancy; we're requiring a deed restriction to be recorded against the property. If the owner resides at the property longer than six months out of a year, there's an opportunity to, for the community development director to issue a waiver for this requirement for these temporary absences. And then if the owner isn't able to reside on the property, it states that only one dwelling may be occupied. And so they'd have the option of only occupying the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit. And then off-street parking, one space per ADU is the proposed requirement. We had some discussion before about, well, if they don't have two off-street parking spaces currently, which is required for a single-family dwelling, should we require them to retroactively go back and put two spaces as well as the one space for the ADU on there? There was some discussion about that last time amongst the commission. Currently, you would not be required to do that per, the way our code reads. And so if you had a single-family dwelling, you're required to have two off-street parking spaces, and you didn't have those currently, if you were to create an accessory dwelling unit, you wouldn't have to go back and create basically three off-street parking spaces. All you'd have to do is create one to satisfy what was currently happening on the property. Then our next steps, like Nels mentioned at the beginning, we need to decide on draft ordinance to be published for public hearing at this meeting, and that's to, for the public hearing on March 11th, 2015. We'll also have one more chance to take a look at it or review the draft ordinance, and that's on February 25th, which is our next meeting. Of course, hopefully conduct the public hearing on March 11th, and then tentatively scheduled for public hearing before council on April 6th. And so that's our timeline.
Thank you, Mike. As I indicated to commissioners by email, I think we're not all of one mind on all the details of this. And so I wanted to think through and find a process where I thought that we had a chance to work through some of the differences, the nuances. And what I proposed as a mechanism was that I would ask for a motion to refer the ordinance as written to council, and a second, and then begin inviting opportunities to amend pieces of it if you were interested in going down that path. And when we've exhausted trying some amendments, then we'll go and vote on the resulting document as amended.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
I'll second it.
And Wendy, thank you. All right. So are there amendments that folks would like to offer to the document?
Well, not an amendment, but I finally got, so I'm of one mind about it internally, which was sort of my struggle. I think the advantages outweigh the potential disadvantages. I can understand people wanting it to be a conditional use in R1 and suburban residential. I think there's enough limitations on it that it's not going to be a big problem. I would be happy tossing that particular hot potato to the city council, and I would understand completely if they wanted to make suburban residential and R1 be a conditional But otherwise, I think I'm in favor now of just sending it forward as written.
I have a question just from going back through the whole thing, and in fact, the stuff that's not in red, just looking at what's allowed in each zone by conditional use. And I had a question, two questions. One thing that surprised me is basically rental units, residential rental units are allowed in every single zone as a conditional use. Right? Am I right about that? I think I am. And so they're allowed as a, and so wouldn't that, am I not understanding something about what residential rental units are? I mean, wouldn't that be, if you wanted to build rental property, wouldn't you just go that path, rather than doing an accessory dwelling where there's supposed to be a stipulation that the owner live there? And so in a sense, I felt even more comfortable with this whole thing because it says, you know, if you're really trying to create rental property, there's already accommodation for that through conditional use, and you have to go through that process. And I found that really interesting. I didn't realize it was in every single zone. And the other question I have related to that is it talks about, on a lot of the zones, having 35% lot coverage as the maximum. That's including the primary dwelling and the rental unit, or could you clarify both of those things for me? That would be
Well, the residential rental unit, first of all, anybody can either rent, or if the owner wants to live in it, they can live in. The owner occupancy rental really doesn't affect our current situation. So if you have a single-family dwelling, you'd be able to, the owner would be able to occupy it, or you could rent it out. It all lies with the definition of how we define family. So we define family a number of different ways, but I guess the simplest definition of family is the allowance of four unrelated individuals, in that you can't have five, you can't have six. What a residential rental unit allows you to do is to go up to six.
Okay.
And so that's really the only distinction. So single-family
So it's really only one structure on the
It's only to allow a couple of additional renters to be within a single-family house, and that's why they typically review it through a CUP, because there's additional cars and traffic and things of that nature. So that's the distinction.
Yeah.
On the 35
So you're specifically saying it is only involving a single building on a single lot?
Correct.
There's no other structure involved?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, that's what wasn't clear to me.
And then with the 35% lot coverage, I believe if you read the beginning of all of those limitation sections, it will say for all uses, principal uses other than dwellings.
Okay, so any, so it could have all these garages and accessory buildings up to 35% lot coverage?
Yeah, if you were to, so principal structures, so if there was churches or other uses like that allowed as principal uses, you'd be limited to 35, but dwellings themselves aren't limited to 35.
Mike, in the minutes, there's a note that says, it was a conversation about deed restriction that Gregory was raising. Gregory thought owners could take the deed restriction off anytime they wanted. You said that they couldn't remove a restriction put in place by the city, and said you would confirm that with the city attorney. Were you able to?
I have confirmed that, and that is the case. I'm planning to have a sample deed restriction at our next meeting for the commission to review. But basically, what the deed restriction does is limits the owner occupancy, but it's, there's two parties that are subject to the deed restriction or privy to the document, and that'd be one, the city, and then one, the owner of the property. And so there's language in there that the deed restriction shall not be dissolved or go away without explicit written permission from the city after sufficient building inspection or zoning approval has been granted. So if the accessory dwelling unit were to turn vacant and the owner didn't occupy the site anymore and they sold the property, it would have to either be converted into another allowed use, be converted into some part of the home, or some type of accessory structure on the property. And we'd actually go out there and verify that it was no longer an accessory dwelling unit, and then we'd release the deed restriction on the property. But yeah, since there's two parties that are involved with the deed restriction, and then there's language in there that prohibits them from just removing that, then it is tied with the property and bound on the heirs and assigns for the future.
Thank you, Deb.
What would happen if it were being sold and the buyer, potential buyer, wanted to use it as accessory dwelling unit? Would that somehow, how would he, would he have to somehow petition in order to have it added to his deed, or?
Well, if they were buying the property, it would be on their deed already, and then just because the original owner had entered into that deed restriction, it means that it carries over to all future property owners. So they wouldn't have to go back and keep redoing it to change names every time. It's basically just putting future owners on notice that there is a deed restriction and an occupancy restriction on the property. It's more of a courtesy. Gregory was right that it, you're required to comply with that just because it's going to be in the zoning code. But it's more of a putting future owners on notice that there is a restriction. It's not going to cost the owner any money. We have a, we do these all the time, and it already has a, we have a draft template, and they just come in and sign it before the issuance of the building permit. So it's not like they have to hire a lawyer to have them put together. It would just be us preparing that with their information, and then when they pick up the building permit, prove that they are the legal owner with a copy of the deed, and then just signing and recordation of the document.
I just want to make a comment about, I know there was concern from public testimony about R2 and R3, and at least within the Fort Russell neighborhood, having just spent the last week or so going parcel by parcel for the Fort Russell Historic District Survey, I would challenge anybody to tell me which is an R2 street and which is an R3 street. In fact, quite a few of the R3 streets are less dense than the R2 streets. Just a matter of record there.
Yeah, I tend to, we're doing the same, same thing you're doing, and you can't tell when you go from R2 to R3. There's no sign, I mean, there's nothing to give you a sense of it. It wouldn't seem that R2 and R3 people are much different than each other.
In fact, ironically, some of the R2 lots, because they're on
North-south running
North-south running streets, thank you, in blocks, tend to be smaller lots than the through lots that go to the alleys on the opposite. So it's kind of interesting in that way, too.
So with those thoughts, I would like to propose an amendment to add another whereas, because I think it's an important thing to note and capture. I think in minutes from December, you expressed it kind of in a fairness way.
Right.
That on this side of the street, it's R3, it's by right, on that side of the street, because at the time, we were debating, should it be by right or by conditional use in various zones? There, my neighbor that I'm looking at is doing it, and I have to get a CUP. I think there's one place where it runs down the alley, and again, it's like, and I agree also, I've done the drive-through in Fort Russell, and I can't tell where the lines are other than I knew from the map before I started. So the whereas I wrote is this. Whereas there are multiple locations where R2, R3, and R4 zoning districts abut, and the existing neighborhoods as built have a similar mix of building types so as to make the zoning boundaries difficult to distinguish. And then it would go on and into the next one. So the idea that I was trying to capture was that we have observed this indistinguishability amongst these zones and the kind of fairness issue that would arise from beginning to distinguish the zones.
Well, I'm not sure that we, I don't know if we need it or not, but I'm like Kurt, I'm ready to treat everybody equally on this accessory dwelling thing. I don't want to suppose that I know how people in one zone or another zone. So I'm happy to send it forward and let the hearing, let us hear from people. We have heard a few people, but I haven't been convinced that we shouldn't treat all residential zones equally in this matter, and they will make up their minds as time goes by as to whether this is a useful tool or not.
And if we present it as it is, then we don't really need that extra whereas, right?
Or I thought it might be an argument for why we were presenting it as is.
Then you'll set aside R2, 3, and 4, but what about R1, then? Would we?
I don't believe R1, well, R1 does abut R2, I assume, but it's not, it's not captured in that section of, in the in that section of, in the Fort Russell. It's out on some other perimeter. But I'm not hearing anyone interested in seconding that motion, so we'll let it die.
Do you, do you think, let me just ask Michael that question, is, in staff, as you've talked about it, do you feel that there's a good rationale to see differences between these zones? I'm, I mean, one of the things about this town, since we don't have any rich people here in this town, by and large, it's a very egalitarian place, you know, and I can, in fact, know my city council member and say hello to him, and that isn't something that happens in every big city. You don't get that. And so I, I don't know if you feel like we need to make that statement, that this is a gala, quite a, this town is a, is an easy mixture, and whether you feel in staff, whether that discussion has ever come up, or whether we can just take it as a priori knowledge. We all go to the co-op, duh, hello. You know, I mean, we don't really have Neiman Marcus and Sears here.
Well, I guess I would say that, you know, whether you're in suburban ranch, or R1 or R4, you may have, you may become, as an older person, in need of a family member to live on-site, or vice versa, or you have a kid that returns home as an empty nester. And so I don't see how a particular zone would have, the cases would be any different from zone to zone, and I've always struggled with that issue.
I was going to say something similar, that it almost seems as though folks in R1 or R2, you know, would have more need, possibly, of this kind of thing for that reason. I mean, if we're focusing, part of the reason that this whole thing has come up is to provide extra space for caretaker, kind of, you know, and that we're emphasizing the aging of the population and that sort of thing, just that factor, kind of piggybacking on what you're saying, doesn't seem like it would make sense to just allow it in certain areas and not in another.
Deb, you have a comment?
That's been my hesitation all along about lack of uniformity, COPs on some zoning districts and some, and not on others. I happen to live in one of the denser ones, and it's always the presumption that you can squeeze more in, but in fact, parking is tight already on the streets, and to act like one zoning district somehow can, can, can take what I think other people think of as abuse, in a sense, like shove, shove this desire off on, in a different district than my own, you know, that, I mean, I understand that, not wanting things to get too crowded, but places that are crowded don't necessarily accommodate it any more easily. So if we're going to do COPs, I wanted to be, I would like it to be clear across the board, or if we're not, then, then not for anyone, that's...
I haven't had the benefit of what I take as considerable amount of discussion about the topic, but I did have a question. As I was reading through this, I'm just trying to kind of reconcile, and some of the discussion is helping already, but it talks about developing zones in strategic locations, and when you include everything, you eliminate the element of strategy so that you can try to focus in a more specific way. I'm trying to reconcile that, particularly with respect to R1, R2, and maybe the SR designations. I just would, I guess, like to hear the thinking about, because you obviously have been talking about this for some time.
A clarification. Is the thing you're reading that's talking about zones in strategic locations, I don't think that's the ordinance, is it?
It's the...
I know you've been doing a lot of homework.
Right, no, it's the implementation objective that's in the comprehensive plan, and it's also the third whereas in the...
Okay.
In the written, so, and it may not be an issue, I'm just trying to understand this well enough to make an informed decision.
To develop zoning in strategic locations.
Did the impetus to research into this start with, folks, you had, your office had been asked by different people about having this kind of thing?
Well, we get a number of these every year.
Yeah.
I'd say we probably have anywhere between three to five.
Yeah.
And the majority of them are in, actually, R1, R2 zones, because they have, it's not that they want to build a detached accessory structure, like above a garage, or, it's usually because that maybe they're older, and their kids, you know, empty nesters, and just looking, that basement is now unused, and they're looking to have their children move back in to take care of them. Those are probably the majority of the ones that we've seen in the last couple of years have been that situation, where they've had a really large house, you know, large property, and they've had an up-down situation where they've wanted to have a family member move into the basement, have a little bit of separation, but still be there on-site to be able to care for.
Yeah, well, good. I'm glad to hear that, because that was kind of my hunch, is like, why would anybody from three or four approach the office and say, could we build, you know, something? I mean, there's already multiple options in those zones, but, and I kind of concluded, well, it must be somebody, folks from R1, or maybe R2, asking about doing this.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it seems to me to make the most sense to just move this on as it is.
So...
And, you know...
Here's what I, I think I interpret from the third whereas, Rob, that the comprehensive plan, which we adopted four, five years ago now?
Two thousand nine.
Okay. Was anticipating exactly the argument that we're having tonight. Is it across the city or spots? And those authors decided to say, develop strategic locations, because they thought they could avoid the conflict of saying, do it citywide, by narrowing down what their recommendation was. And I think our wrestling, which you've heard the tip of the iceberg of, has been, is it strategic locations, or is there an argument for citywide?
Okay.
And I would, I would say that a lot of it, rather, it's more like the emphasis, rather than being on strategic locations, is more strategic design, you know, what is allowed.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I'm fairly comfortable with it, is just the limitations by owner occupancy size, you got to provide another parking spot. I think that's, that's kind of more important than trying to figure out what locations would be good, or what zones would be good for this.
Okay, that, thank you, that makes sense to me as well, so.
Good. In our readings from last summer, at some point, there was one entitled ADUs and don'ts, kind of a play on do's and don'ts, ADUs and don'ts. And it really was a large-scale study that looked at ADU ordinances across the Pacific Northwest, and then tried to determine how many ADUs were actually being built in the communities that had those ordinances, and then what were the attributes of the ordinances. And it lists a number of don'ts, if you actually want ADUs to be created. And so I have been uncomfortable with several of our requirements, because I think they land in their don'ts column. The off-street parking requirement, the owner occupancy requirement, and I can't remember whether the maximum occupancy requirement was another one, that was one of those things, became limiting factors. I think if I were to propose amendments to strike those, that they would go nowhere. It's my sense of the group. And so I'm happy to go forward with the ordinance as proposed, with the thought that at some point, there'll be a sense, we ought to revisit this, if it isn't working. If we pass this nice shiny ordinance, two years down the road, we say, still keep getting people to come into the office, they've, I can't do that. That made it too expensive, that made it too hard, that made it too, then I think the possibility is, that's what I'm hoping, that then there will be some future P&amp;Z, we'll do a review and say, you know, that has been a roadblock, and recommend to council to reconsider. So I'm happy to go forward with the ordinance as written on that basis. I think that it has some challenges.
These aren't, these aren't chiseled onto stone tablets anywhere or anything, are they?
No.
Okay.
They are until they're brought back up and goes back to the...
Right, it is, it is the law of the land until it's amended.
But it is until it's changed, and...
But it's changeable.
That's essentially what you're doing right here, is changing it, so...
Right. Is there any further discussion, things we ought to consider prior to taking a vote on recommending the ordinance to, well, recommending that we want this language, that's what we're going to do tonight, we want this language brought forward for public hearing, is really the motion that we're looking at right now. Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor of bringing this ordinance forward to public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I think that was unanimous, Ann. Thank you all. It's been a long road to get here.
You guys were talking about this before I joined the commission. It's been going on for a while.
I want to see it get across the finish line.
Nobody can say we rushed into it.
So Mike, I guess we are up to number eight.
So we had touched on temporary uses just briefly, I think it was after a long discussion on ADUs at the beginning of our January meeting, so I was just going to take the liberty to go through kind of the beginning of what I had before, to really describe what temporary uses were. Basically, they're temporary sales display stands, you may have seen them around town, similar to Christmas tree stands, we've got firework stands, sunglass, produce, blanket, another type of similar retail stands that show up usually in developed parking lots throughout the city at certain points, certain times of the year. So the issue we have is that we, temporary uses are currently not defined within the zoning code, generally classified as retail uses under the current commercial zones. And so we just allow them, you know, they show up on, on properties, and they're, if they're allowed use within the zone, which is generally a commercial zoning district, then we would just allow them to remain on the property, and they're usually there for a couple of weeks, two to three weeks. We did have two issues within the last year. The first one was a fireworks stand, happened to be located on a residential zone, zoning district, on an undeveloped lot. It was kind of in close proximity to a major intersection, and there was some confusion there about traffic circulation and access points. We have an issue that residential zones don't allow retail sales, so that was one issue, had that busy intersection. There was really no direct access defined on this particular piece of property, and so parking was problematic, we had cars, people on the street, which resulted in some unsafe conditions. We also had a produce stand that showed up pretty much every weekend for the summer. It was kind of located north, by the South Cuplet of town, on an undeveloped lot, within Legacy Crossing, actually. So it was located on that state highway, three-lane Jackson, as it turns into the South Cuplet there. We really had some bad access points, there was people entering from up by Crites and going over, across the whole property, across a sidewalk. There's tendency for dust or mud, depending upon what time of year it is, generated from the inadequate access and circulation on the site. So as part of this, we had done a little bit of research about how other jurisdictions handle temporary uses. We had looked at Boise, Post Falls, Spokane, Valley, Eugene, La Grande, and most require temporary use permits, and that's in order to review a few simple things like vision triangles, so at the intersection, make sure you're back forty feet in either direction and draw a triangle that, basically just a sight distance that oncoming vehicles, the cars can see oncoming vehicles, and it's really a safety issue. Setbacks, making sure they're, they have the correct setback of the underlying zoning district. Circulation on-site to make sure it's working adequately, make sure you have access points defined to the property, and then they usually limit it to a certain duration, and then to make sure that there's, you know, it's within an appropriate zoning district. And so I'd taken a look at the produce stand that had showed up on the South Cuplet, it was about the, probably the approximate location of where it was. You had a big undeveloped property, vacant building here, and then this is the Crites property up here. You had two access points, one down here. A lot of people were entering up at this location, driving all the way across, you know, down the property. You also had issues with people that were wanting to exit out of the site, and using this access point, cutting all the way across a solid line in order to go straight and go east on Troy Highway. Really, you only have one point, or one direction you can travel in exiting the site, and that's to the south from that access point. So those were the issues with that, as well as the no impervious surface, the undeveloped nature. As you can see, this is a, looks like a pretty dry time of year, and there's currently puddles in this portion, and so that gives some concern about tracking dirt and mud in the public right-of-way, and the costs of cleaning that up, as well as some dust and particulates that can be kicked up from, from cars going across undeveloped property. And looking at a typical situation, fireworks stand usually comes in at Rosar's property. You already have a developed site, currently paved, large parking lot, pretty ideal location, you have four access points, and so these run pretty smoothly. The parking lot's really never full at Rosar's at any time of year. You have all these parking spaces for the patrons of the fireworks stand, or whatever stand it is. You have good circulation on the site, usually located, so there's, the travel aisles are well delineated there, and usually no problems with those, those types of operations. So what we were proposing was to first define what a temporary use is, and this was just my first crack at that definition, so we're, you know, welcome to change it and massage it as needed. I came up with a land use established for a limited duration, which does not require permanent site improvements. Temporary uses include, but are not limited to, the erection of temporary structures for activities such as produce sales, Christmas tree sales, fireworks sales, and other retail sales permitted in the zoning district which the proposed use is to be located. Also, I included some of those specific use standards. We have a, chapter twelve of our zoning code is specific use standard section. We have other standards for daycares, townhouses are included within those, urban agriculture, some of the market garden standards are included within those, and so it's those specific standards for certain uses within our zoning code which are included in that chapter. Probably proposed to put temporary uses in there. What I was discussing before was that we'd exempt the public from getting a temporary use permit for the sites that are developed and already have all those nuisance, those issues associated with them, already mitigated because they are developed sites. They have the access points, they have the circulation, generally have setbacks accounted for, so we really don't have any issues with the ones that are undeveloped sites. But require a permit, a temporary use permit for the undeveloped sites, and that's just in order to review the site access, circulation, setbacks, the things we talked about, vision triangle, the appropriate zoning district, and the duration. And so I haven't got to what that would look like within an ordinance, but from this discussion, unless you have any other direction, I could certainly start to include that in an ordinance for the commission to review, maybe at our... for the commission to review, maybe at our next meeting, February.
Yeah. So, does that, like, does that mean that the fireworks stand in Rosar would not need...
Yeah, they wouldn't need to do anything through us, it would just be the, the folks that choose to set up on an undeveloped property like the, the South Cuplet produce stand.
What about food trucks, or how does that work in there?
Well, we were planning to address food trucks, but they wouldn't be included within this definition. I think that would be part of the discussion as far as temporary uses go. I think we'd probably propose to treat them similarly to the way we treat temporary uses, so if they were undeveloped pieces of property, then they'd basically be exempt. If they were on undeveloped portions, we'd wanna look at kinda those same things, 'cause they'd be similar uses. You know, one's selling something, or they're both really selling something, one commodities and one food, so.
So, did the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, the fireworks folks, do they ask Rosar's then if they can set up there, or the Christmas trees that's set out at Howard Hughes, do, do those folks usually ask?
Yeah, they always get the property owner permission before they go out there.
Yeah.
Yep. And usually the fireworks stand, they have to go through the fire department as well in order to get, make sure that everything they're selling is, is up to fire code and they're allowed to sell, and that their structure is safe, and it's not gonna be a public safety hazard to cars in the parking lot, things like that. And so, the issue is that...
Even this produce guy, did he, or person, did that person ask?
I'm sure that Gritman was aware that he was operating on their property on the weekends, but he didn't have to do anything with the city, and that was kinda the issue that, and really, that it was just his bad signage, circulation, and, and really.
Right.
But, you know, we, we only see the, kinda those two issues just this last year. It's, it's really been operating pretty smoothly over the last, you know, however many years.
Yeah.
Which, kinda to my mind, on the duration, I mean, if he wanted to set up his produce stand for the summer, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that he'd have to get more than, you know, to do more than one permits, so long as nothing changes.
Yeah, it'd just be one. He'd just fill out kind of a scope of everything that he has going on, his circulation plan and, and everything, and then that would just be good for the, probably a whole year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mike, so exempt for developed sites. So, a church parking lot would be a developed site, might be in a residential zoning district. Is it, I, I don't want something to slip through here where all of a sudden we've got retail sales established, because it's a established site.
Yeah, they wouldn't be allowed just 'cause of the underlying zoning district, but I did include the language at the end of that definition, another retail sales permitted in the zoning district in which the proposed use to be located.
Okay. You gotta capture that.
Yeah, I, hopefully that captures it pretty well, but fireworks stand, we, we'd allowed them to remain for the duration, 'cause they were only gonna be there another two weeks, and they had gone through the fire department to get approval, and it just so happened that on their form that they approved just didn't have zoning approval, so they never checked it. And so, we'd already issued them a permit, and so, that won't happen again, they're aware, and they'll find a different location next year. But, yeah, hopefully that, that covers the zoning.
So, sense of the group, you want Mike to bring forward an actual piece of ordinance?
Sounds like it would clear up some problems, yeah.
And we were directed by admin or somebody to work on this.
Yeah, we, I brought it to admin committee and, and just to make sure they were all right with pursuing it, and they said, gave the blessing to have planning and zoning commission take a look at it, so.
So, I think the sense of the group is, carry on, Mike, and, okay? Bring us something to work with.
Okay.
Number nine is legacy crossing, off-street parking discussion.
So, this came up recently, just 'cause we haven't, ever since we adopted all of our regulation with legacy crossing, we really haven't had any projects in that area that we've reviewed since that time, and, and the Urban Renewal Agency had put out an RFP for some proposals, had received a few, and we had been reviewing this, or at least I have, from staff in, as far as the design guidelines and the underlying zoning district, and really realized that we may have a conflict, but I just wanted to, just so everybody's familiar, which I know you are, we've got the legacy crossing, and the urban renewal area is, is much bigger than this, but we're talking about really the district, the overlay district. It's basically between downtown and the University of Idaho, bound by Jackson to the east, Sixth Street to the north, Paradise Creek to the west, and you've got ninety-five to the, the southeast there. Originally envisioned as redeveloping in a vibrant mixed-use development with limited surface parking, and intended to enhance downtown and provide connection to the University of Idaho. That was adopted in two thousand twelve, and it had three components to it. The first was the urban mixed commercial zone, includes allowed uses, the limitations on uses, setbacks, building height requirements, so that was our standard zoning district. We created the zone specifically for this area, but at the time, there was an intent that it, it could be expanded into other areas of the city. We also had design guidelines, which were included in a, a design guidelines document which was adopted at the same time, and those design guidelines were intended to address building architectural design, pedestrian facilities, streetscape sidewalk design, public spaces and amenities, parking structures, things of that nature. We also had the overlay district, which is really the mechanism where the design guidelines are to be applied and establishes the hierarchy, the organization of how those are reviewed, which comes to planning and zoning commission to be reviewed when there's a, a project that's proposed within legacy crossing, overlay. So, there was those three components to the plan. We also have, within our zoning code, off-street parking requirements, and that's in chapter six of the zoning code under our supplementary regulations, and it's just, within all zones that require off-street parking, these are the calculations that you use. And looks similar to this, multifamily, for instance, you have for studio apartments, where one bedrooms, one point two-five stalls per dwelling, two bedrooms, one point seven-five per dwelling, three bedrooms, a little bit more, point seven-five per bedroom, and then you also have a wide variety of commercial uses as well, the, just depending upon the use, there's a different parking, or off-street parking requirement. Well, within the urban mixed commercial district, and this is really the only district other than central business, central business, we, we just exempt out off-street parking. You're not required to provide it, but you can if you want to, within the downtown area. We have the section limitations on uses, and under that, required off-street parking, and here we state that the minimum required off-street parking within the urban mixed commercial district shall be fifty percent of the minimum parking required by this code, or as specified within any specific area plan or overlay zoning district where such plan or district specifically addresses off-street parking requirements. So, what we're referring to here is the overlay zoning district at the end, so legacy crossing overlay parking regulations would apply to this zone. And what this allows is if we, if we do an urban mixed commercial zone in some other area of the city, you would do fifty percent of whatever these requirements are. So, if you had one bedroom studio apartments, it'd be at a, a half of the one point two-five rate there is what, is what you would be looking at, point six-two-five would be your requirement per, per dwelling unit. We also have this provision that required you to not exceed the maximum allowed off-street surface parking, and so that's a hundred percent of, of what's required in our parking structure, our parking table, and so you're not able to exceed those, those requirements. And this is one of the few zones that, that we have placed maximum parking restrictions on zoning districts. Well, that brings us to our legacy crossing design guidelines where we have yet another table, and this is really the only, usually you have certain things within design guidelines, and they're the, the building architectural features, those pedestrian ways, the sidewalks, the adjacent streets, they usually cover with a design guidelines document, and here we have included off-street parking requirements. And what we state here is that residential uses, it should be one stall per dwelling unit, hotel, it's one stall per room. We have a calculation for convention meeting space, and then we have office, retail, and other uses that don't require any minimum off-street parking. So, if you're a, a restaurant, bar, office, some other type of retail, you're not required to provide any off-street parking within the legacy crossing district. And so, really the issue lies with, we really have these conflicting regulations within the two codes, because urban mixed commercial, you're required to provide off-street parking at a, a rate of fifty percent of what the typical is, and then we also have off-street parking including within legacy crossing. And then if you look at legacy crossing, which is intended to be a really urban mixed-use environment with limited surface parking, you're actually required to have more parking within the overlay than the urban mixed commercial if you're, say you're creating a studio or one or two-bedroom apartment. Fifty percent of one point two-five, or fifty percent of one point seven-five is less than the one that's required as part of the overlay district. And so, you're actually requiring more within the overlay, which really wasn't the intention when we originally set out. And I think as we, we look at the urban mixed commercial zone a little bit more in other areas where it can be applied, there's really not a whole lot of other options, and it's probably just gonna stay within that area right now. When we tried to apply it maybe in, in the North Main Street corridor, within the motor business zone when we had that council goal, it really just created too many non-conformities. And so, when you think about an area that should be zone urban mixed commercial, it really needs to be an area that's freshened for redevelopment, so redevelopment's gonna happen. It's not gonna be placed in another area that's already developed, and usually the areas that it's gonna be placed are surrounding the city core, 'cause that's really the intention of that zone, is, is that urban vibrant mixed-use residential above office, office above some type of retail. And, and so, we don't think that you're really gonna be applying urban mixed commercial just 'cause of the amount of non-conformities with these areas that are already built out around the city core. And so, what we're proposing is, is to make it consistent in, in the parking regulations in just one area, and to relocate those, that legacy crossing parking table to the urban mixed commercial zoning district, so we don't have the, having it being in two places. You know, it's confusing to people when it's, there's one parking requirement within the underlying zone, and then you have another parking requirement within the overlay district. So, we'd propose to relocate that, that table to the UMC zone, and to change the residential use parking requirement from one stall per dwelling unit to the, what we have in the urban mixed commercial, the fifty percent of the minimum parking required by the off-street parking table found in chapter six. And so, it's really what we were running into when we were reviewing these projects, and just the amount of, of surface parking that they were required to have per the, the mixed-use proposals that we were seeing. And so, having, you know, been the first time that we've actually applied the design guidelines and worked through the, the districts and then the overlay, this is when it really came out that, you know, we have a little bit of a conflict here, and it, you know, it's worthy of exploring a fix, to be able to shift it back and make it clear for everybody that's using the guidelines, and to really get the parking requirement where we had intended it in the beginning, so.
Okay. So, staff is recommending, or asking us to direct, bring forward some amendments that would address that.
Yep. If you see, if that seems, sounds good and seems reasonable to the commission, then we could certainly start looking at making those, those shifts.
Thoughts, folks? Seems like this is one of those things that had lots of moving parts, and...
I'm surprised that it doesn't happen more often, you know? You write this code, and this code, and this code, and ten years later, it's, you're, you're liable to have these things, but it's a good find, and so I think you should go right forward.
The sense of the group is, we would like to get this cleaned up. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Any other business that we have to consider tonight, Nels?
I just wanted to ask Mike if, in two regards, for tomorrow night at the commission, or at the public, a, a meeting, are you planning to bring a couple of boards for ADUs again?
Well, we've been instructed that there's not to be any type of handouts or posters or...
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, it's strictly just...
They're just a dance band?
Yeah, that's why we have the three-minute, yeah, the chair of the, the commission, each commission's supposed to give a three-minute pitch about what's going on.
I just, I wasn't sure, and so I wanted to know kinda what to expect. Thank you.
That clarifies what the community can do in a volunteer way for us. Turn up March eleven for the ADU hearing.
There you have it.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Be careful what you wish for.
I'll be gone, and you'll have the gavel. All right. That was a good thought. Any other questions or business? With that, we're adjourned.